Ready to go? All right, we'll go ahead and get started. Call the meeting to order. It is Tuesday, October 15th. This is meeting number 20-24. Town Council of Freeport. We're meeting in the chambers this evening. Our first order business is the Pledge of Allegiance. Please join me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, well, for the record, establish who's here. Looks like everybody's here, but we'll get that on to the recording. Counselor Pillsbury.
Present.
Counselor Fournier.
Here.
Counselor Lawrence.
Here.
Counselor Brinoy.
Here.
Counselor Smith.
Present.
Counselor Pitch.
Here.
And the Chair, John Egan, is here. Our next item is to waive the reading of the minutes, should a motion appear, to waive the reading of the minutes of meeting number 19-24, held on October 1st, 2024, and accept the minutes as presented.
So moved.
Seconded. Been moved and seconded. Any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Six in favor, and I'm going to abstain because I wasn't at the meeting. Our next item is announcements. This is a chance for announcements to come forward, and I don't see any in my packet, but I'm not sure if we had any that... No, just looked for them. Didn't see any.
I would guess your clerk is probably inundated with...
Election staff, yep, right. So, any other announcements from the council? Okay, we'll move on to information exchange. Specifically, information exchange is for councilors to share any updates from committees that they may have been staffing or attending, any particular pertinent communication with residents, or other things in the community going on that generally should be shared. Information exchange. In case anybody missed it, the pinkies are out front. Big event last Friday to herald their arrival. And regardless of everybody's own individual opinion about public art, I think one of the real values there is how interactive they are and just encourage people to tune into the materials that are available from the QR code or from other handouts to learn a lot more about the fishing industry and its history in this part of Maine's past. That's one of the real values, I think, of the public art exhibit.
I was able to attend that on Friday, actually, and it was a lot of fun. People were really excited and spirits were really high.
Great.
Yep.
Anything else for information exchange? All right, we're moving right along. Next item, Sophie, Town Manager's report.
It's always hard to come to a council meeting after a Monday holiday. It kind of feels like it all comes together at once. Just wanted to make sure everybody was aware that we are extending the application period for the property tax assistance program. So that's available for individuals who income qualify, that are over 65 and older, that have lived in Freeport for at least the last five years. We're going to extend that from last Thursday until the end of the month. So we're having more folks find out about the program, and we want to make sure we've got everybody out there. Council chambers was really full the three days that we held drop-ins. And I have not counted all the applications yet, but I would guess we're well over 200. So it is wonderful to see the number of people, but on the other hand, there was an awful lot of need that we saw. So we're going to continue accepting those applications, and we will have the list ready for council's approval for rebates at its December 3rd meeting. Just want to remind folks that we have agreed to a special town council meeting on October 29th, Tuesday, the 29th, at 6:00 PM. We're going to talk a little bit more about some of the elements of that meeting with the ARPA designation for the unspent funds, Freeport Economic Development Corporation's collaborative proposal. We'll talk more. And then we also have an executive session about some pending litigation and council rights and responsibilities. So it will be a full night, and we'll have a lot of fun. We are getting still inundated with concerns about campaign signs. Just want to remind folks, campaign signs go into the right-of-way under state law. They can be there for up to six weeks. They need to have the contact information for the person that is either placing the sign or giving permission for the sign to be placed in their name, either way. And that contact information doesn't prescribe. It doesn't have to be a street address. It doesn't have to be an email address. It doesn't have to be telephone number. It just says contact information and the date it was placed. Those are the only things that need to be there. So we were running Earl kind of ragged with the one-off to try to approach so... To bring some efficiency to what we were doing. Chris is now maintaining a list that she and codes are working together on. And once a week, or when Earl can, he will go out and take a look at it. We did confirm that the sign that is strung on telephone wires is not something that we are going to take 15 feet in the air, is not something that we are going to take down. It's not safe for that to happen. Information has been forwarded on to the organization, the company that can manage that. So, yeah, who knew? And Chris says there really were no announcements.
Okay. Right.
Beyond that, I have, as I reported to council late this week, we've been moving forward with the lease at 3 South Freeport Road. I need to talk with Dan and Eric after the meeting just about some things with that. And that's kind of all I have right now. It's putting out fires.
Any questions for the manager? All right. Next up is the public comment period. This is a chance for members of the public to address the council on non-agenda items. So if there's something that you're here for... We do have three public hearings. If you're here for one of those, we'll get to those shortly. This time slot is for people to address the council on non-agenda items, and we ask you to keep your comments to three minutes. And please introduce yourself when you come up to the podium. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Peter Anzweany. I live on 87 South Freeport Road. My comments to the council is I've gone through the looking glass and have looked at valuations and mill rates. When you look through the 4,112 records that are in the valuation database, there's a lot of anomalies. And I think that we need to do a little more research. But one of the questions I would pose to the council is, has anybody ever looked at a bell curve for how the taxes and the valuation is done throughout the town? Because it would be kind of interesting to see it because of the discrepancies between the valuations and the various tax maps, actually. So I would recommend doing that. But then, after looking through the Alice in Wonderland, it really comes down to the assessment process, even though there's potential unfairness within the various district. It's only a mass problem. So having taken the course online for the assessor, I realized that really the basic effort is really on your part and on the school part because evaluation and mill rates are only a calculation on your taxing, on what you spend and what the school board spends. So I will continue to drill through the various wards and to see if I can identify really specific areas. There's about 250 houses in Freeport that are over $1 million. But there's also about 500 houses that are under $200,000. So, you know, having questions... And I know you're doing the valuations, and you're doing housing studies, and you're doing all this kind of stuff for the plan. But I would really start thinking about having real data based on what the valuations are compared to what the discussion has been, at least in the housing component that I was part of, and before this next period, which is the 18th, I believe, is the next session. It just feels like the whole strategy around what we need in town doesn't match with what we really have as an inventory. And I know people have done an inventory, but when you look at valuations, that inventory doesn't really jump out at you. So, thank you.
Thanks, Peter.
Hi, my name's Dan Winship. I just wanted to touch base a little bit on this fire truck you guys are looking at, buying. I really don't think this is an adequate vehicle. And I've been a mechanic for 25-plus years. I'm a Class B driver. I've had a lot of experiences with single and tandem axle trucks. So the tandem axle truck, to me, is the most stable vehicle. It has extra airbags in it to keep it from body rolling. And as a single axle truck, I think this truck is actually overweight for the conditions of the road in this state. When you consider the fact that we get frost heaves, we get potholes and stuff, this truck hits that. Now, this truck's going to be somewhere near its maximum weight, okay? Which is 36,000 pounds in the rear. So every time you hit something like a pothole or a crater or anything like that, it is a severe hit, okay? Now, these tandem axle trucks, when the first axle hits it, the rear axle is keeping that from having actual pressure on it when it actually hits these craters and it hits whatever it's going to hit. Now, one of my experiences with a single axle truck was I pulled into this lot, and I backed up, and I came to a stop. The lot was under construction. Well, what I didn't know, which I did get out and look, and you saw tractor tires going over this spot. Figured it was a safe spot to sit. So when I came to a stop, my truck dropped, okay? What I found out was they dug out a stump, something you would never really know. But if I had my tandem axle truck at that point, I would have never been sunk. This truck sunk right to the frame on one side and almost rolled. Then you get winter time, okay? With all this weight on this truck, you get extra friction on your tires, okay? Makes the tires hot. Well, what that does in snow is it turns that snow to ice. Well, now you've got a runaway vehicle, okay? Once it turns to ice, this truck will slide, and you can't stop it. Even with wheel chocks, it's likely to get carried away. With a tandem axle truck, you get less friction on these tires. You get more grip because you've got eight sets of tires holding that truck. So for the conditions of the state and stuff like that, I actually believe that we should stick with the trucks that we got. And I know it would be more money. But the latter truck is a life-saving piece. I do think it's necessary. But I also think the right piece of equipment is what we need. We also know that the trucks that we have down there have stood the test. We can get parts for these trucks. So repairing them and servicing them isn't a problem. Whereas, we also know that Yarmouth has one. It's broke down because they can't get parts. So what I'm saying to you is I would consider sticking with what we already have, stuff that we already know works. Sometimes the cheapest vehicle will bite you in the rear, you know? So thank you for hearing me out.
Thanks for your comments.
Hello, Joseph Miliacho, Freeport resident. Just a couple of items here that I wanted to hopefully ask for public discussion on in the next couple of months or whenever before budget season starts, for sure. One is, you heard me up here before ask and point out several anomalies in properties I've seen and demonstrated to the assessor and some other folks in town that show that there are at least three properties that I know of, one very specifically near me that have been being taxed at $800,000 to $900,000, which, whatever that is, 25, 30K, I don't know. Yet their market value is greater than two times that amount. And the fact that they're selling very specifically, and the assessor's office and your assessing job here needs a look, please. I suggest it's nice to, my respect, former counselor Anzweany, discussing disparities between properties in different parts of the town. To me, that is a function of market value. I would love to see the analysis. So please, maybe look at this as a topic for discussion, if nothing else, to educate the public. It's a very complicated thing. And what I can tell you is in a town that seeks equity, not equality, equity, over these last several years, there is a dramatic inequity for many people who've lived in this town for years. Because people that are coming in or selling homes for market value, you're leaving... Just one or two of those examples I shared with the assessor and others. You're leaving $30,000 on the year, a year on the table that could go to offset and reduce the taxes of somebody's property who is being assessed at 100% or maybe 110% or 90% of value. So please, please, if you could, schedule something. It's a workshop, maybe have the assessor, the state come down and discuss it because there are state laws that, you know, we're in compliance with, but it doesn't necessarily mean what's underneath, meaning average, is correct. The second one is, can somebody please explain, when you get a chance today, why we have to spend $1.5 million and borrow it at those times of highest interest rates? When I was on the council, I don't know what happened, but I'd love to hear you guys discuss it. We had a 20-year capital budget plan. We saw everything coming. We avoided, for 15 years, other than very exceptional things, bonding and borrowing. So the people of Freeport are very prudent, fiscally managed people. I would love to hear someone up there explain, is there still a 15- and 30-year capital budget? Have you been funding it, taking from it, or underfunding it? Thank you. And the last part was, please, please do your jobs and take down signs if your ordinance says you can't have a sign without this on it. Go take them down. It's called enforcement. Like, I see neighbors arguing and fighting. I came in to talk. They're calling me, like, what are the rules? Just go out there and take the signs down. Commission yourselves as a deputy. If a sign doesn't have a name, take it down. Bring it over there. Find the person who comes to get their sign. Thank you. Both sides of the aisle on that one.
Thanks, Trump.
I think we solved it for now.
Andrew Rosnall, Route 1 South. I wasn't at the meeting, but I think I watched it on somebody's... Somebody showed me on TV, because I don't have a TV at home. So at some point with this gun noise issue, there was some discussion that Melanie had provided a sample ordinance. Does that ring a bell with anybody? That was in the minutes? Provided a sample ordinance on noise, a gun?
I believe Representative Sacks may have offered that, and somebody may have asked her about it, but we haven't digested that or taken any...
It was not a draft ordinance. It was clarification that the town could be able to enact an ordinance if so desired. We had been seeking clarity on that. She provided that clarity. But I don't know if there was a draft ordinance included with that.
If you get one, can you distribute it ahead of time so we can discuss it?
If we have it, it should have been out there. I don't know.
Do we have one? We don't have one? Is that what you're telling me?
We do not. As far as I know, we don't have one, Andy.
To clarify in that process, the ordinance was simply brought up as something that we could do. There was never actually a draft ordinance on the table.
I thought I read somewhere or heard somewhere that...
Yeah, there was some misinformation that went out about that.
All right, thank you.
If I could just... We had a resident who was very upset and didn't feel that the town was addressing their concerns. They reached out to Representative Sacks. As she always does in issues that constituents reach out to her with that are municipal in nature, she copied the council and me with an email back to that person with a laundry list of attachments. One of those was an ordinance. I don't know that anybody here printed it out. It was not ever a part of our discussion. But during conversation, it did come up that she had provided that. I can go back in my minutes and try to find it, but it's nothing that we've taken and worked with, so I don't have it as an active file.
Yeah, but we can reproduce it, correct?
Yep.
Well, that'd be great. Thank you.
Hi, Charles Hardenberg, 11 Somerset. Two quick points. First, I want to thank Assistant Town Manager Carolyn and Town Manager Sophie for doing what I could see as an excellent and friendly job when I went to apply for my property tax reimbursement. They were very friendly and very efficient about it, so that was great. Second, I wanted to applaud Counselor Fournier for bringing up the idea of a finance committee, which I, who couldn't really understand what was going on during budget season last year, hope that maybe the council could do that this year and we could get some more clarity on how the budget is created and flows through, maybe. And I would hope through a finance committee that we could do that. So I hope the council is considering Counselor Fournier's idea. Thank you.
Thanks, Charles. Anyone else wish to make a comment during the public comment period? We'll have a segment later on in the evening for anyone joining us electronically to do the same. I don't see any other hands up, so we'll move on to our segment of the agenda where we take action. First order is the Consent Agenda. That's item number 240-24. Be it ordered that the October 15th, 2024 Consent Agenda be adopted. Do we have a second?
Second.
The items on the Consent Agenda are related to election staffing and some donations to the library. Any reason why anyone have to take an item off the Consent Agenda for individual discussion? All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, Consent Agenda passes. We have three public hearings that we're going to be holding this evening, and we're going to be setting a couple more. The first public hearing is next on the agenda. It's item number 241-24 regarding our upcoming election and the ballot language and the ballot initiatives. So we'll... I don't know if we necessarily need to read. I guess we do, because that's what the public hearing is. So Counselor Pillsbury, could you please read item number 241-24?
Sure, the entire item, including all the...
Yeah, we'll get it on the floor, and then we'll open up the public hearing for anyone that wants to comment.
Yeah, but do you want each question read in its entirety?
I think so. Just that's the purpose of the public hearing, is to get it into the record.
Okay. Item 241-24, to consider action relative to holding a public hearing to discuss two referendum questions that will appear on the November 5th, 2024 Annual Election Warrant. Question one, Article 3 of warrant. Do you favor authorizing the Freeport Town Council to issue general obligation bonds, notes, or other borrowing instruments in an amount not to exceed $500,000, which may be callable for the purpose of purchasing real property located at 22 Main Street? Tax map 11, Lot 132, also described as the approximate 0.76-acre undeveloped parcel on the corner of West and Main Streets between the Freeport Town Hall and Public Safety Building, subject to an appropriate environmental review, satisfactory appraisal, and future use as solely determined by the Freeport Town Council. Question two, Article 4 of warrant. Ordinance to authorize the issuance of general obligation bonds in the principal amount not to exceed $1.5 million to purchase a new fire ladder truck.
Okay, so those are the two ballot questions that'll be on our election ballot coming up in just a couple of weeks. This is a public hearing. Anyone wish to comment on this particular item in the public hearing? Please introduce yourself.
Susan Nurse, Pleasant Hill Road. First, I want to offer two notes of thanks. One to the Moser family for their generosity and patience as the town has spent much time discussing their property and the Mosers' offer to allow the town to own it. And the second thank you is to the council for putting the referendum on the ballot so that the voters can give you their answer. And it's been talked about, so now they can voice their opinion. There are two issues that surface about 22 Main Street. One is whether or not the town should own it, and the other is what the town would do with it. The question of whether or not the town should own it has been formed into the referendum question. The voters of 2024 will vote about this property's real significance in the community. They will make the decision about ownership. By owning it, the town will control what happens there, just like it does for other town-owned properties. The cost over a five-year bond to the citizens is approximately equivalent to a cup of coffee a month for the five-year length of the bond. The other issue concerning its purpose or its use is not totally in focus right now. There is an opportunity for that vision to become clearer as time matures. Many committees and councils, realtors and corporations, and Freeport citizens have deliberated about its use. Each of them has their own interests in mind and their own ideas about what should happen. The issue of its use needs time to percolate, and the pressure to decide is relaxed when the property is in the hands of the town. And while it's percolating, something might come out of that. Somebody sitting in this room or listening on the cable channel may come up with an idea that everybody can get their heads around. Today, 22 Main Street is open green space that's already being used as a respite, a picnic area, a place for markets and shows, festivals and events, and more. Maybe we won't know in two years or two decades what this special place will ultimately become. It could have a building on it. It could be used to extend the municipal campus. It could stay as it is. After November 5th, we'll know whether the townspeople of 2024 want the town to purchase the property at 22 Main Street, and then we can think about what do we do with it. But the urgency is less because... But the urgency is less because the town will have ownership of it and the Mosher's won't sell it to a private entity and then have that as the result. So the referendum question asks the voters what shape the future of Main Street will take, and then we have time to percolate. Thank you for your time.
Joe Malgacho, Freeport, Maine, speak on this issue. You know, for me, you just heard me speak about the dramatic, dramatic tax increases on property tax that people in Freeport are feeling, if nothing else, just for the inflated value of properties. Later on today, we'll be discussing a pidly $300, maybe $200, maybe $100 a year rebate program to people who have reached the age of full Social Security benefits. You'll be asking to measure their income. You'll be wanting to see all of their assets, their stock accounts. You go in and turn those over to the town manager. I would suggest at some point you look at, especially this day in politics, people's tax returns getting lost, and so just be careful with that. But my point is, you're doing something like that that I think I read cumulatively caps out at $700. So if you get $300 one year, you get $300 towards your property taxes, then no? Okay. There's a word that said cumulative to 700. But my point of bringing this up is, same as the fire truck, what's going on with our fiscal management and our prudent management of the assets of people's cash in Freeport? You, as a council and committees, turned down and got rid of housing in Main Street, what I considered a beautiful property in terms of quality, that I think the Mosher's were broker in to put there, passed the planning board, when it approved. I don't know what happened, but what I heard is it was overturned because it didn't fit the character of Freeport. You really need to go back, and I'm surprised I haven't seen it on agendas. If somebody spends the money, the time, reads our ordinances that I and past councils approved and planning boards have taken a lot of time with, to say that something doesn't fit the character of the downtown? Not sure how far back we're going with character.
I just want to clarify, Joe, that the judicial decision made last year was by a private party appealing the decision that was made by the town committee, not by the council.
Okay, so...
Not at all by the council.
So you guys didn't have to make a decision. Somebody retracted. Okay, thank you.
Significant point.
No, it's an important one. The public said, or people, the law, said that they couldn't build it there. So you need to go back and look at the zoning. My point is, I wish folks had come up with something we could do with that for half a million bucks, but they didn't. And you're asking to borrow 1.5 million for a fire truck that we should have had set aside for capital. So I don't know where...I know where I'll be voting on this. I'll be voting no, because, not that it's not a value property, but after all that deliberation, we still don't know what we want. And I think as a council, not taking an opinion on this and putting it out to vote is not doing your job. You guys should have made a call on this. Yes, up, down, no. People in Freeport have a busy enough time trying to understand where their taxes are, what's going on, all this stuff I talked about earlier, and you guys are putting out and allowing to be put out at every public hearing on workshops and the comprehensive plan that I've been to, and Caroline and Sophie know this because I pointed it out to them and they corrected it. Here today, vote yes on one, purchase this key parcel. So why are you putting these out here? Please, you know, let's bring some transparency and ethics to this. You can't be putting politically charged things like this at public meetings, at town meetings. So why is this here? Who put it here? And who...it's been here since the beginning of the meeting. Vote yes on one. Well, if nothing else, just because of the tactics, I'm voting no.
Hello, Peter Enzwinney, South Freeport. So 22 Main is kind of a lightning rod right now, and it's a lightning rod for several reasons. One is that the decision that was made to counteract the approval that had happened, you got all the right-of-ways done and so on, the decision was reversed. And I know it was reversed by an attorney coming in and saying, hey, we're going to sue something. But the issue becomes if you don't, if you're not consistent with the rules and you don't follow the process...we're going to have several of these in the coming years, especially with the plan that's being developed with regards to housing, with regards to land. So I think you're going to have a lot of issues come up, and there's going to be a lot of feedback that says, you can't do that. So I think being consistent is going to be what you need to rely on. And, I mean, I know there's going to be issues on the sewer systems. I know there's going to be issues on the water systems, because the strategy of the plan, that we've gone through two series of it so far, says, we have a view of the world, and that is high density, and we're going to put it in one place to maximize value for, or minimize cost and maximize value for Freeport. Well, there's going to be a lot of people arguing for that not to happen. So if you're not consistent, you have no way to stand, right? So on 22 Main, I think it's a beautiful piece of property, and it's going to cost $500,000. And then if you build a building on it, it's going to cost another $3 million. And then, you know, so it's just a slippery slope. Chalmers Hardenberg again, 11 Somerset. I don't know if I can clarify this for the town, but I was on the Board of Appeals when we reversed the decision of the project review board to okay the 22 Main development, and it was unanimous decision by everybody on the board, as far as I can recall. And what we said was, and I think Joe's correct about this, it didn't fit the character of the town specifically. You're supposed to look around within 500 feet, according to the zoning, and see whether it fit with the town, excuse me, with the buildings within 500 feet. And every building that we could see and that was shown to us had a sloped roof. The building that was presented by Paul did not have a sloped roof, and I, for one, just said, well, it doesn't meet the zoning standards, so I voted against it. But I didn't come in there saying, no, there shouldn't be a building there. I just came in there trying to meet what the standards were, and I think that's what everybody on that board did. So there was no vote by the town council. Councilor Egan said, there was no attorney saying what we shouldn't do. It was we, five people, said, no, this does not meet the standards of the zoning.
The Inwinship. Now, when they tore down that house, there was things buried on that property. How do we know the contaminants that was buried on that property has been taken care of? Because there's asbestos that was part of that house, and that was all buried over. So if the town goes and buys it, who takes care of that? Previous landowner or the town?
Sue presented the point of view of 22 Main Street. Yes, there's nothing to add to that, but I think just in quick response, the language of the ballot says there has to be an environmental clearance, and the town doesn't buy it if there isn't. So if you find any of the things that the gentleman referred to, you simply don't buy it, no matter what the vote is. It requires compliance.
Ed, can you introduce yourselves so we have it on the public record?
I'm sorry. I forget. My name's Ed Bradley. I live on Flying Point Road.
Thank you.
Andrew Ross, Route 112. In reference to what happened at the Board of Appeals, I remember the Wakeland case in Yarmouth, which went to the law court, and the law court decided that the applicant should be able to understand by reading the ordinance what he has to do to pass or fail. Flat roofs are permitted in this zone. Scale and other things are very subjective. I don't know how you quantify those in an ordinance, but that was the law court's decision years ago in Yarmouth. Yarmouth case, he took town of Yarmouth, and they were in a similar thing, you know, your, you know, your space is too much and you're asking for too much, and they didn't have any real quantifications, just like scale and proportion is not quantifiable. It's a subjective thing. It's a visual thing. It's for each person, it's different. But the flat roofs were permitted in this zone. It fit the height requirements. It fit everything. It got a 5'2" ticket out of the project review board, and it was overturned at the appeals board, four lawyers in attendance. Everybody had one. And I must say, I'd sit for about an hour, and it was so upsetting, I had to leave, and I've sat through 30 years of meetings, and I thought it was a kangaroo court. People were trying to change what the project was. The appeals board's attorney was trying to straighten these guys out, and they were trying to do things they weren't permitted to do. But I think what we're talking about is scale and proportion is subjectable, and I think we should really get down on ordinance where the applicant can understand what he needs to do to pass or fail. And I think with this project failing next door, I think it's going to set a bad precedent for an applicant to come to Freeport again and try to start a housing project, because everybody watches. Every applicant watches, and we can talk about all the downtown housing, we can talk about all the housing developments, but until you have a guy that's going to come build one in this environment, in this town, you can pass all the ordinances you want about how great it is to have housing, but until somebody wants to stick their toe in the water, and there's not too many lately, so just remember that when we start talking about this kind of stuff, about scales and proportions and looks and character, and it's all very subjective. So thank you.
All right, any other public comments on the ballot initiatives? All right, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing. I think we're just approving this, right?
Nope.
As it goes forward?
No. You also, did you talk about the truck, or does nobody care about the truck?
We did both.
We did both.
Yeah, we did both. We read both.
All right, then you just close it.
We're just closing it?
Yep.
It's already printed, so we don't need to take any action.
So just for clarity, the charter requires if you're going to put a referendum item on the ballot, that you hold a public hearing just so the public can learn more about them, about the issue. In this case, also, we're building out, we have information online, but we're building out a website with even more information so that people can go online and learn about both of these issues. So no action needed.
All right, so that closes the public hearing. Joe, I'll just mention that I'm available to talk to you about how we got to the point of having to have a ballot initiative for a fire truck. Didn't fall out of the sky.
John, I mean, do you want to, for the rest of the public, I mean, I think it is an important thing, because I, for one, am incredibly fiscally responsible, and every spending decision that we make up here, I know who is paying for it, and I don't take that lightly. And I know that's one of the core responsibilities that we have up here, and I've been really impressed in the three years that I've sat here, how thorough our debates are and how much we care about the impact, and I really don't want that message to get lost. And like you said, this didn't fall out of the sky, and it pains me to have to bond stuff, just because that's just not a sustainable path forward for the town. But for me, you know, when you have to have a piece of equipment for life safety, you have to do what you have to do. And we had that planned in the capital budget in the coming years, but we had to move it up because the truck isn't going to pass inspection, and the repairs on it, maybe Sophie, you can kind of quote the numbers, but the repairs on it were going to be way more than the value we'd get out of it. So that's a tough one. In terms of 22 Main, putting it on this election cycle, one of the key drivers for me was that we could put it on this, we're already running the election, if we put it on a special election, it would have been a cost to the taxpayer, and I wasn't going to be in favor of that. So this is, you know, that's just a side point to illustrate the fact that, like, the costs add up, and I know that everybody up here is mindful of that, but happy to have these discussions offline as well, but just wanted to take the opportunity to say that we are taking these concerns seriously and really appreciate you bringing them up and love to have the dialogue and the discussion, because we're residents in this town too, and it falls on us as well, and I just wanted to make that clear.
Thanks, Matt. Anyone want to add on to Matt's commentary there? Daryl?
Joe, you're on the council. I was begging for money, so I know how difficult it was back in the years, but I think I'm encouraged by hopefully a refocus on what we're doing in our capital budget. So I think over the years, for whatever reason, some monies were taken or whatever. So I think this council has heard it loud and clear. For me and other people on the council that we need to refocus on, I know the town manager has heard that loud and clear, and I think the finance committee and I think this council will look at that, to look at how, you know, we are setting our priorities and we have a good capital budget process that we always had the years, but I think we can do a better job on investments or whatever, and I think that would be a great opportunity for our finance committee and councils to dig into it some. So I think there, it's a time that we realign where we are and refocus on where we need to go, and I think we'll get there.
I also, I think we had the intention to talk about the financial committee during the town manager's report, but sometimes we lose threads.
Yeah.
But that had come up a couple times, I mean, consistently for the last year at least, so I don't know if you want to take a second to talk about that plan. Sophie?
So we had talked a little bit about starting off informally, and I think Dan and Joanna and Matt had agreed to kind of take one for the team as we figure out how we want this finance committee to work. We just need to schedule a meeting coming up in the next month or so. What we have on the docket so far is budget. I don't know that it will work exactly the way, how some folks are envisioning it, because the initial budget development is a staff process. But we have some ideas that we can work through and investment strategy, because if we all want to make more money, then we would have to assume a little bit more risk, or...so we want to talk that through with the group. But those are the two key items. And then the third item, which Matt might think is a key item, because he put it there, is this idea of really wanting to come up with a framework for our fees that we charge, like, not specific fees, but how we get to the fees we charge, what we look at and what we expect.
So I think the plan is you'll send out an email for scheduling, and then that will be a public meeting, because there'll be three councillors, so, you know, if folks are interested in sitting on that, please do.
Oh, and one thing that we're hearing a lot of, and I'm personally not as well-versed in it, I'd love to have the discussion around valuations and better understand the process and how town staff and the council and the public can work together on this.
Daryl? Daryl?
I just want to put a pitch in. I won't be on the council, but Chip's running again, should he get in. I would hope that he would have an opportunity to serve. He has a lot of history and is kind of a conservative guy, which I think we need to have that voice. So before the committee is set, I hope there's an opportunity. I know, realize it's election coming up, but, you know, if he is still serving, I think he would do a great job on that committee.
Yeah, I'd like to be on that committee.
Great. One of the amazing things about an informal committee is nobody is formally appointed, so people can come. And once it's public, anybody can be there.
I really feel like the more the merrier on that, because it's an important conversation, yeah.
So, turning back to the ballot initiatives, we heard a lot about 22 Main Street, which is actually the smaller of the two questions, and not a lot during the public hearing about the fire truck other than just the fact of why we're bonding it. But we did hear some comments in the earlier public comment period from Mr. Winship, and I was wondering if either... Well, first, I wanted to point out there is a memo on the website that details quite a lot about how we got to this process and what the need is for the fire truck and what some of the quotes were to get different types of fire trucks, including, I believe, two different dual axles and then this one single axle. But I was wondering whether the manager or the chief wanted to speak to the necessity of the ladder truck in general, the details of why this particular truck is being chosen, because I think that would be helpful. I know we had a conversation publicly, but now that people have their ballots in hand, a lot of people are asking these questions. So I'm just hoping one of you might review that information for the public.
I just want to point out that we appointed Chief, and three weeks later, he's here doing this. Yeah, well, no, I wasn't going to go there, Peter.
So, the process went down evaluating the replacement of the ladder truck. We've spent a significant amount of money just this last year in maintenance of the ladder truck that we have now. The current truck is a 1996. It's 27 years old. By NFPA standard, it's two years over its usable life, so to speak. The truck has served the community very well for the 27 years it's been here. The problem we're faced with now is the amount of degradation to the frame. The frame is built and manufactured as two C channels, kind of one inside the other. What happens is you get moisture, you get sand, you get salt, you get all of that that gets in between there, creates rust jacking, and that's essentially what we're faced with now. So there's some pretty significant rust holes that are developed within the frame now. There's been some body, body rust and whatnot that's been patched, you know, super, you know, kind of superficially has been patched. So the more significant issue is the actual foundation of the truck, if you will, the frame rails. So what we did was, I kind of went on a mission to find out what was available, given the fact that the replacement timeframe is like everything I think we're all facing right now of trying to get somebody to come and fix your furnace or put in a new air conditioner in, that there's, you know, the time delay is incredible. Right now, most, most every large manufacturer that builds ladder trucks is four years out to get to build and fabricate a ladder truck. I went through Pierce, went through Rosenbauer, went through E1, reached out to some other manufacturers with basically what we were looking for, what we needed, spoke with all of the representatives, asked what was available in a timeframe that we wouldn't be waiting four years to get a ladder truck. And this particular truck was available. It is an E1. It's built in Ocala, Florida. This truck was already pre-ordered, if you will, in 2023. So we've already shaved off, you know, two-plus years of build time, if you will, or the queue, as they call it. And essentially, this truck was scheduled to come offline in August of '25, I'm sorry, October of '25, and it's already been moved up two additional months with the aspect of, you know, the potential sale to Freeport with the truck. We potentially could see it next August, which is even better if our truck doesn't pass inspection in February, its DOT inspection. Cost-wise, yes, the single axle truck, being a Quint, it has a ladder, has a pump, has a tank, essentially a versatile all-in-one vehicle, if you will. And for the price, the $1.5 million is a lot of money, but unfortunately, most, all the ladder trucks, all the ladder truck manufacturers, to whether it's a tandem axle, single axle, whatever, different manufacturers, are well over $2 million to purchase. So what I was seeking was essentially availability, cost, and a truck that would suit the community very well.
Chief, can you also speak to, is this truck in use in other places in Maine that you're aware of?
Absolutely. Yep, yep. There's a similar, similar vehicle in Hamden, Maine. So as far as inclement weather and highway driving and off-road, not off-road technically, but, you know, side road driving, you know, obviously, you know, it's, you know, Hamden's right next door to Bangor. There's one in Cape Elizabeth, Maine, which there's this particular style of truck, being single axle, single rear axle, makes it more versatile in that tight community where, you know, the houses and the streets are very narrow, very close together. Dover, New Hampshire runs a truck very similar to this. Rye, New Hampshire. And then obviously, you know, several, several communities in, you know, in New England. City of Boston runs, most all of their aerials are single axle trucks. They're not Quints, but they're single axle trucks. They run separate companies. They run an engine company and a ladder company. So they have the personnel to do that.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
All right, so we're moving past the ballot initiatives. Great, all right, comments are finished. Our next item is item number 242-24, to consider action relative to a consent agreement on a particular piece of property at 28 Cunningham Road. We're going to open up a public hearing, but before we do that, let's get the item on the floor. Counselor Fornia, could you please read the be it ordered?
Thirdly, be it ordered that a consent agreement for a property located at 28 Cunningham Road be approved?
Second. Okay, so the item has been moved to the floor. This is a public hearing. Anyone wish to comment or make questions of the council on this particular item? Please make your way to the podium. Introduce yourself.
Can you just clarify what item it is? I think there was a question.
This is consent agreement on 28 Cunningham Road.
Item 242-24.
All right, I don't see any hands, so we'll go ahead and close the public hearing. We had a discussion about the consent agreement at our last meeting. Anyone have any comments or questions for the manager? Terms of the agreement we've seen?
I just want to thank the property owners for their patience in getting to this point, and I'd be glad to get this settled. This is, thank you for your patience and taking care of.
I completely echo that comment.
Can I just add? We sent out the public hearing notice, and I've heard back from four property owners that wanted to make sure that the council was aware that they fully supported passing or approving the consent. And zero people have contacted me about any concerns related to this.
Any other questions, comments? All right, it's been moved and seconded. All those in favor of adopting the consent agreement?
Aye.
Any opposed? Seven to zero. All right, our next item is another public hearing, item number 243-24, to consider action relative to proposed text amendments to Section 104 definitions and Section 535 related to cannabis establishments. Before we take testimony from the public hearing, Counselor Lawrence, could you please read the beat ordained so we can get it on the floor?
Sure. Sure. Be it ordained that proposed text amendments to Section 104 definitions and Section 535, cannabis establishment of Chapter 21 Freeport zoning ordinance. The proposed amendments would allow medical cannabis dispensary cultivation facility as an allowable use under the existing use of medical cannabis cultivation facility be approved.
Second.
All right, it's been moved and seconded. Caroline, you want to provide a little context for this item? We had quite a bit of conversation at the last meeting, but...
We did. So after, or at the adoption by the council of the land use regulations and licensing ordinance for cannabis, one of our current medical caregiver facilities came forward, and they wanted the town to consider allowing a cannabis dispensary. It was not a use allowed by the state when we first started talking about this years ago. It came up later. So we had an applicant-driven agenda item to allow the use of a medical cannabis dispensary as a new land use in Freeport. So you have before you some definitions. We define the new dispensary use, and then we further broke it down to define it with regards to a dispensary cultivation facility and a dispensary retail store. The purpose for breaking it out was to be very clear that dispensary retail stores are prohibited in the town of Freeport. So this new use would allow dispensary cultivation. What it really means, it's a type of medical registration that growers can get from the state. Under the old rules and currently under the Freeport setup, it would be medical caregivers, which are restricted in the number of plants and the number of patients. So in some facilities, you have multiple caregivers that have to license separately or register separately through the state and operate very distinctly. In this case, the applicant-driven one, the caregivers would be allowed to come under one state registration and operate as one entity. In the case of the business we have in Freeport, they said we would not see a change on the face of the earth, but it would change their registration process through the state. The other thing we talked about at the last meeting is that a dispensary, although it doesn't allow retail, would allow point-of-sale transactions, which is different. We have to allow them with caregivers, but with a dispensary, we have the ability to prohibit them. So this new dispensary cultivation would also restrict the point-of-sale transactions at the facilities today. There's a quite close mirroring between the two items before you today, the zoning ordinance and the licensing ordinance. It's mostly definitions, and again, to clarify, what is and what is not allowed in Freeport. Happy to answer more technical questions if you're interested.
Thank you, Caroline. Questions for the assistant manager? All right, this is a public hearing. Anyone wish to make comments to the council on this matter?
Peter Renzewiney from South Freeport. So, I must have slept through some of this. So in 2017, we had this discussion where we first introduced the whole cannabis conversation about retail stores and farming and so on and so forth. Then I went on vacation sometime, and you passed this particular component, which is the farming component, to raise the marijuana. So part of the conversation, though, is, so, you know, we had raised a lot of issues about farming and labs within the original conversation in 2017, which was it will require farming for marijuana, additional sewer components, additional electric components. And I think that that was one of the reasons we said, you know, unless we have a map that says this is the extra charge that they're going to pick up and not a normal charge of a property owner, which is the normal taxation on valuation. So it doesn't, based on what I've read of the passage, it doesn't deal with any of those types of information, that type of restrictions or even calculations. So if, for instance, the electric system for raising grass, marijuana, so you need special lamps, you need special amplifier, light systems. And so recently, a bunch of them got sent to the dump, to the transfer station. So then the question is, well, so are we paying for that? Is that our, because it's a business and they're using lights, they're using electric, they're using sewer, who's paying for that extra usage? Because it takes a lot more to grow marijuana than it does for me to read a book, right? So, I mean, that was part of the conversation we had in 2017 when we said, you got to really be careful about this. And so I'm not sure if that's been taken up in the current, you know, when you passed it last year or the year before. As I said, I was asleep. Thank you.
I can address a little bit of that, Peter, and then maybe we can ask Caroline to clarify. But I believe the enhancement that was requested in the language of use by the business owner was to account for an evolution of the rules that are governed, that are handed down from the state on this particular cultivation. And we were not in sync with what was being allowed by the state, so we were trying to update that. But we put, I'm pretty sure we put a, when we made our amendments, we put a cap on the number of facilities. And I believe it was the two that are existing plus two, and that would be it. And at this point, I think we still just have the two. With regard to utilities, those are metered, and so the additional costs, so to speak, are paid by the user. I have no idea about anybody's particular item in the landfill. I don't know anything about that, but... Am I off on that, Caroline? Did we, we agreed to cap the number of businesses utilizing this rule as...
We're not on the licensing ordinance, but yes.
Yeah.
You did. And also, when the planning board adopted this in certain zones, they closely mirrored where manufacturing and processing is allowed, and they carried over any of the same size limitations. Town of Freeport does not allow the testing labs, which you referenced. Yeah, it was just the cultivation and manufacturing and processing.
The increased usage of water, the increased usage of electric. So electric, I understand, but this metered. But the sewer component, is that also standard for, like, business that uses so much water, will get charged for that?
So any commercial use that comes in before the project review board during the site plan review process would have to demonstrate that the utilities have signed off on it. The case of what we have today that's triggered site plan review, they're both on private utilities, well-inseptic. But if they were to come in, they would get a, if they were on public, they'd come in, get a capacity letter. The sewer district would figure out the connection fee.
I'll wake up again then, too.
We talked about it for two years, so I can see how you fell asleep. Just saying.
Also on that, the water is metered, so if they're on town water, it's metered. And what ends up happening is if you use it for a sprinkler, you've got to get your own meter and have that taken off. So, again, the water is metered, but they're on a private system, so...
Any other comments during the public hearing? Thanks for the questions, Peter. Okay, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing. Any comments or follow-up from the council on this particular item? The next action item is extremely closely related, pertaining to licensing as opposed to changes in the land use ordinance. All right, so all those in favor of item number 243-24, to make the text amendments to Section 104 and Section 535?
Aye.
Any opposed? Carries. I'm looking over at Chris, he's not there. Item number 244-24, related. This is to consider action relative to text amendments to Chapter 66 regarding cannabis establishment licensing. This is a public hearing. Counselor Brnoy, could you please read the beat ordained so we can get it on the floor?
Sure. Be ordained that proposed text amendments to Chapter 66 Town of Freeport Cannabis Establishment Licensing Ordinance be approved.
Second. All right, it's been moved and seconded. Anyone, this is a public hearing, so anyone wish to address the council and make comments on this particular item? Please make your way to the podium. Introduce yourself.
Now, I'm not against people starting their own business and stuff like that, but, I mean, these grow shops and everything are just popping up everywhere, you know? And I know people that, that's tried starting these, and they're, they're just so popular all over the place that they fold. So it, in the end, it becomes a problem of how do you, okay, so you, you give them their, their shop, they put in all this money, and then they, they fold because five miles away there's two. In, in Lisbon, there's five in, in a little half-mile circle. In Bath, in a quarter-mile strip, there's five. I mean, how many of them really need to be around, you know, to be successful? You know, it just, there's so many of them around that the, the customer base is almost nil. So that's just my opinion. Thank you.
It, just to make it clear, sir, the proposed amendments are not allowing any retail. The council has consistently since the introduction in 2017 of cannabis, has specifically said we're not going to allow retail in our community. So this is for cultivation and production?
Well, no, it's more for cultivation.
Yeah. So I'm, I'm just pointing out the distinction between selling retail and what you'd see visibly in a community versus what might be happening in a, in a closed facility.
Yes, no, I was talking about the cultivation.
Yeah, okay.
Hey, Sam Coppola. I live on Main Street, the chair of the planning board. I just want to, I guess reiterate, I'm sure Caroline has said this, and you guys have heard this, this was very much the planning board's attempt to address a specific issue from one specific current business owner in town, just to make his life and his business, the life of his business easier. The intent is certainly not to expand anything, so I just want to say that. Hopefully representing the planning board, I think it was unanimous. We understood that, you know, it's, it's always been the council's position to prohibit retail, and we just wanted to take the approach of making things more consistent and easier for existing business owners in town. We don't want to put up extra red tape, and it felt like there was extra red tape for this business, and they made a compelling case why we should remove it, and we did. So I encourage you to do the same.
Thanks, Sam. Any other comments in the public hearing? Not seeing any. Any online, any hands up? No hands up? All right, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing. And any questions or comments from the council? We've had conversations about this, and we just voted on a very much highly-related item just a few minutes ago. So this is, as Caroline pointed out, the licensing end of these minor amendments. Any questions for Caroline? All right, all those in favor of the order?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, Carrie's. Our next item is item number 245-24, to consider action relative to setting a public hearing later on in December. Just for a note, the council doesn't typically have a business meeting in the month of November with the election and placement of new counselors on the board, so our next regular meeting for action would be in December. Counselor Smith, could you please read the be it ordered?
Be it ordered that a public hearing be set for December 3, 2024, at the town council meeting, starting at 6:00 PM in Town Council Chambers, 30 Main Street, Freeport, to discuss a consent agreement for property located at 9 Todd Brook Road.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. This is related to a consent agreement, which generally involves cleaning up past violations, usually with heavy support and consent from the property owner, to clarify things. We have Nick Adams on Zoom to put some context on this. We're not voting on it tonight, we're just going to be introducing it for a public hearing on December 3. Nick, you want to give us some context?
Good evening, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah, so I met with the property owner probably beginning of the year, and they're looking to, there's an existing barn on my property, and they're looking to convert that to an ADU for the, I believe they're in-laws. I, I believe we could probably issue the permit, but going through the process, I believe title work, maybe appraisals, this was flagged that this barn was built, and it was built outside the building envelope, subdivision that was approved by the project review board. And the, basically, instead of going back to amend the subdivision plan, we thought it was better to go to a consent agreement, given that the previous owner applied for a permit, showed on the block plan where they were going to put the barn, which was clearly outside the building envelope, and we thought that the consent agreement would be a way to go, so that way they could convert this barn into a in-law, a ADU, and they have agreed to pay the attorney's fees that the town has incurred, which is the, the cost that's in the consent agreement.
Nick, when was the permit issued for the barn to be built?
One second. It was issued in 2000.
And the subdivision was approved when?
The subdivision was approved in 1992.
Okay. And the, the owner that was granted the building permit in 2000 is not the applicant for this consent agreement?
No, I believe it was two or three owners ago, and the other item, and it does allow the barn to be, to be, it was permitted as a 30 by 24, but it, what was built and been, and been assessed for since 2000 was a 30 by 50-ish, according to the survey that we had.
50-ish, okay. I've seen it.
I'm just going by round numbers.
Yeah, okay. I'm sure the surveyor is precise about the dimension.
Yeah, it's not exactly square, so it's a porch, and then like a lean-to roof.
Okay, great. I just wanted to get the parameters of what the item is and why it's, why it's coming to us as a consent decree. This follows along with virtually all the others that we've heard. So we're setting a public hearing. Any questions about setting this public hearing? We can have further conversation with Nick and potentially the applicant if they're here on December 3. All right, so all those in favor of setting the public hearing?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, item number 245-24 passes. One more public hearing to set. This is item number 246-24, to consider public hearing regarding amendments, Chapter 67, Town of Freeport Property Tax Assistance Ordinance. Dan, could you please read the be it ordered?
Sure. Be it ordered that a public hearing be set for October 29, 2024, at the town council meeting, starting at 6:00 PM in Town Council Chambers, 30 Main Street, Freeport, to amendments to Chapter 67, Town of Freeport Property Tax Assistance Ordinance.
Second.
All right, it's been moved and seconded. Sophie, just a bit of context on this?
This was one of the first ordinances I actually worked on when I first got here, and we are going through the first year of this program, and came up, up against a couple of issues with the ordinance as we worked through it that I took to the ordinance committee for, to discuss, and ultimately, the thought was before we approved rebates, we should probably correct the ordinance to reflect how we've kind of had to shift on the fly to keep things equitable. And the idea being that after we go through this round of the program, we'd come back together as a group to talk about what works, what might be challenging, and what tweaks we might want to make to the, to the ordinance. But the major changes, there are only two. One is we never defined what an asset was, so we came up with five elements of the assets that we would be looking for. And, oh, maybe three. We clarified retirement plan distributions were in fact income, and we talked about extending the application procedure because it really needed to go hand-in-hand with tax bills for people to understand and for us to calculate current year tax versus previous year tax. So we, the suggestion that staff made was to extend it from August 1 to, applications have to be with the town manager no later than November 1.
Right.
And I believe that is, that's it. Oh, and then extended the meeting that council was going to look at, the applications from the second meeting in September to the first meeting in December, or at least the list of rebates, not applications.
So this memo is in our packet, it'll be available for the public to review before the public hearing, and if anyone from the audience or in the public wants to come by and pick one up, if you get a Xerox copy or photocopy, the amendments will be slightly shaded in gray and underlined, so if you don't have an original that has the red lines on it, so you can see the amendments.
I just want to recognize, this is the first year we've done this program, so I'm not surprised we're seeing some changes and amendments proposed to this. So I think, thank you for sort of addressing the, the need to be flexible on this as we get, get our sea legs here on this.
Technically, we probably can't set this public hearing until we establish the meeting on the 29th, which is our next item, but we could say pending approval of the next item, the public hearing would be set on October 29. All right, all those in favor of potentially setting our public hearing on October 29th for item number 246-24, amendments to Chapter 67 regarding property tax assistance?
Aye.
All in favor? Okay, any opposed? Seven to zero. Now, to make that action more official, item number 247-24 is to consider action relative to establishing a special town council meeting two weeks from this evening, Tuesday, October 29, 2024. I will introduce the item, be it ordered that the town council amend the meeting schedule to add a special town council meeting on Tuesday, October 29, 2024. We have a couple of final things to clear up, and without a business meeting in November, we'll need an action item. So is that, second?
Waiting for a little breath in there.
Thank you, Chip. And so Sophie referred to a couple of the things that we'll be hearing. This will be a relatively brief agenda, but maybe if you just want to quantify for anybody who didn't hear the first part of the meeting...
Sure. So thus far, the proposed agenda is to have the public hearing on the Chapter 67 ordinance amendments. We're going to, and other business, be talking about proposed collaboration between Freeport Economic Development Corporation, the chamber, and the town. And so what would be on the agenda, if council so chooses, would be the allocation of tax increment financing dollars for that, to support that collaboration. And also tonight, council's going to be talking about unencumbered, or projected unencumbered, American Rescue Plan Act funds, and on the 29th, we would look to hopefully have council allocate them so that we can make sure we get them under contract. And then the final is a, at a meeting with the town attorney to talk about pending litigation and the rights and responsibilities of the town council.
So, at least a half hour for that meeting on the 29th, but thank you all for agreeing to, or apparently about to agree to, an additional meeting. We're taking advantage of the 31 days in October here and fitting three in without getting any closer than two weeks between them. Unique advantage for the month of October, so thank you for that, but it allows us to keep up with business before the lull of November, in which the council takes very little action. All right, so it's been moved and seconded to add Tuesday, October 29th, as a special additional council meeting. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. That concludes the action items on our agenda this evening. The next item is online public comment. Anybody online wishing to make public comment? This would be the time to do so. We ask you to introduce yourself. Please keep your comments to three minutes. I don't see any hands up. Okay, we have three quick items for other business. We have an audit presentation from our outside auditor. We have a brief discussion, which Sophie just referenced, regarding the collaboration between FDIC and the chamber and the town, and then discussion on ARPA funds to start with, and then we can hopefully queue that up for an action item on the 29th. So, award-winning finance report producer Jessica and Runyon Kirsten-Willette from our reports, please make your way to the podium, and let's hear our, our annual audit report.
Hi. Good evening, thanks for having me. Jessica's going to pass out the graphs that we put together for tonight's meeting. This is our usual year-end meeting to talk about the results of the audit, so we're talking about the fiscal year 2024 audit, and I would say, as usual, the audit went very well. We were here to do some pre-audit work in May, and then we came back the week of August 5th to do the year-end of audit results, or audit procedures themselves, and then we're here in mid-October, which is actually really good turnaround time for the audit. So we're going to go through these graphs. As usual, if anyone has any questions or comments, feel free to jump in at any point. And I would like to thank Jessica and all of the staff, because as usual, we show up on day one and they have everything ready for us. A lot of times, Jessica actually sends us files before we even show up, so we have lots of files sitting in our inboxes, and they also do a great job of getting us information while we're here. It does make a difference as far as the turnaround time for the audit, and we appreciate that. If you turn to page two, I mentioned the timing of the audit already. As far as the results of the audit, we do the audit of the year-end numbers as they appear on the financial statements, and as far as that part of the audit, the financial statements did receive an unmodified opinion, which is a clean opinion on the financial statements. In addition, we do some testing under government auditing standards, and under those standards, we come in and do some testing of the town's internal controls as they relate to financial reporting. And under those requirements, there were no material weaknesses and no significant efficiencies, and we actually didn't have any minor recommendations either. So again, overall, very clean audit. The next few graphs we have are an overview of the financial statement information. Most of the graphs focus on the general fund for the town, which is your largest, most important fund. It is where most of the town's operations are reported. And on page three, we have an overview of the general fund fund balance. This is over the last five fiscal years, and it's broken down into the different categories of fund balance. You'll see that there's a small portion called non-spendable. That is usually made up of prepaid expenditures or inventory. They're basically items that are not readily available to be spent in the future. The next category is the committed fund balance, and that is made up of the tax stabilization amounts, future employee benefits, and reserves. You can see that that amount has steadily increased from 2020 from 2.1 million to about 2.3 million in 2024, so that's been a 7% increase over the last five fiscal years. The assigned fund balance is an amount that is set aside for specific purposes, but if it's not used, then it does lapse to your unassigned fund balance, and that is actually made up of the amount that has been budgeted to be used in the next fiscal year. fiscal year. So in 2024, you had budgeted to use $675,000 of your fund balance in fiscal year 2025. That amount has been fairly consistent. It was at $600,000 for 2020 and 2021, and then increased to $675,000, and has stayed there for the last three fiscal years. And then unassigned fund balance is the category where the remainder of your fund balance is. It's what's left over after you put amounts into those other categories. Unassigned fund balance has increased by about 10% over the last five fiscal years. In total, your fund balance increased from fiscal year 2023 by about $932,000, which was a 12% increase. And total fund balance has increased by about 9% over the last five fiscal years. I know that was a lot of numbers. The next couple of graphs, we'll talk about why fund balance changed specifically for fiscal year 2024. So on page four, we have an overview of the general fund revenues. This is a budget-to-actual comparison. So looking at some of the larger variances, you can see that taxes were higher than budgeted by about $813,000, and that is because actual property revenues include overlay, net of abeyments, and also excise taxes, excuse me, which exceeded the budget by about $450,000. Intergovernmental revenues also exceeded the budget. That had to do with state revenue sharing, homestead exemption, and state road assistance, which were all higher than anticipated. In addition, there were general assistance reimbursements that were about $142,000 higher than budgeted due to an increase in demand. Investment earnings were higher than budgeted by about $481,000, and that is because that amount is typically budgeted conservatively, as well as some of the accounts are restructured to maximize your interest earnings. So in total, your revenues were about $1.7 million higher than budgeted, which is about 5% of the budget. And then on page five, we have a similar graph, but for general fund expenditures. And again, this is looking at the budget-to-actual variances. The general government category, those were under budget due to two positions that were vacant for at least part of the year. Public works expenditures were under budget, as there was, there was less roadwork that was completed due to staff shortages, and there were also budgeted positions that were unfilled for a portion of the year. Insurance and benefits expenditures were under budget, and that had to do with those unfilled positions.
Are we sure there's no evidence of, like, how effective and efficient that management of the budget was, about why we have extra dollars here? It's extraordinary to see that. Everywhere I go, everybody's talking about budgets busting from materials and labor costs, et cetera, and it's just really encouraging to see that our town government is operating underneath its budget. So, thank you to the staff. Nicely done. Sorry for the flip comment.
Yeah, no, that's fine. In total, expenditures were $569,000 under budget, which is about 2% of the budget. And then you'll notice that there is a line for transfers out of $677,000 that was not budgeted, and that has to do with the transfer that takes place every year after the results of the fiscal year audit, where you decide how much is to be transferred to the reserves based on fund balance policy.
Is that the same as the $675,000 on the previous page?
I'm sorry?
Is that the same or similar amount to the use of fund balance that we see on the revenue page? Is it just a coincidence that those two numbers are the same, or is that the same pocket of money that we're just showing in two different places?
Well, they closely correspond, but yeah. Jessica knows about this better.
Yeah, they are, it's, they're kind of similar in regard to you budget an expected use of $675,000 in fund balance if we are, but it doesn't relate to the capital side of things. It's actually designed if there's an over expenditure in the general fund for whatever reason, and we would normally have a negative, you know, fund balance change year over year that year. We would instead use $675,000 of our existing fund balance to kind of offset that impact so that we're not hitting fund balance negatively, if that makes sense. And then what you're seeing on this page is when the results of the audit are all said and done, because the other one's kind of before, right? And so once the results of the audit are all said and done, and we know where we stand from a fund balance perspective, usually in the January timeframe, I would come to you and say, okay, the audit's done, we have this much in excess of our policy, here's staff's recommendation, you know, how much we would expect to, or ask to appropriate to the capital plan. I believe last year, it was closer to, I'm going to say 1.3 or 1.4 million that we sent to capital. This year, it happened to just be the 670-some-odd thousand.
That makes sense, thank you.
Daryl?
I don't need the information tonight, but I would like to have a look back, back on page four of the investment earnings of the last four years. Maybe that could be emailed to the manager, Jessica, to forward to us. That'd be helpful.
I can get that to you.
Yeah, thank you.
Similarly, on page four, it says, "We restructured accounts to maximize interest earnings." What did we restructure?
So, we worked with our financial institutions, you know, where we do our banking, and they had different, I'll call it their account structures, they had different structures that we could transition, so rather, and I'll use terminology as like a person going in, right? Instead of doing a free checking, we did the business level checking, or, you know what I mean? So it was just, it was another tier that they were able to offer, that they saw, and after talking with them, they realized we weren't taking advantage of. So we were able to restructure over to that instantaneously to take advantage of a much higher rate.
Thanks.
On page six, we have another fund balance graph. This one is the unassigned fund balance as a percentage of budget. This is used as a gauge, not only to basically look at how healthy your unassigned fund balance is, but also to gauge where the town is in relation to its fund balance policy. So this is over the last five fiscal years, and in 2024, the unassigned fund balance was 16.5% of the budget, which was an increase over the prior fiscal year, which was around 14%. And actually, last year, we talked about how that was the lowest I had actually ever seen that percentage since I've been doing this audit. So the town does have a fund balance policy. They have a target, which is one and a half months of the budget, which is about 12.5% of the budget, and it allows an additional 5% of the target for maximum fund balance. Now, compared to the fiscal year 2025 budget, the FY 2024 unassigned fund balance exceeds the maximum by about $754,000. And so this is where you, as Jessica was talking about, this is when you have that conversation about how much of that fund balance you want to move to reserves to bring that percentage down, and to be more in line with your target. On page seven, we have an overview of the town's expenditures for 2024 and 2023. So these two pie charts, each category is expressed as a percentage of total expenditures. And we have the two fiscal years next to each other, so you can kind of compare the two years. Generally speaking, the different categories stay relatively the same. There were some that had some fluctuation. In 2024, transfers to other funds actually decreased by 5%. In 2023, it made up 7%. As Jessica mentioned, you transferred out about $1.3 million, I think it was, in the prior fiscal year, as opposed to $677,000. Public safety actually decreased by about 2%, and education also decreased by about 2%, sorry, increased by 2%. 2024 is on the right, and 2023 is on the left. So those two categories increased by 2%. All of the other categories stayed relatively the same. And I have pointed this out before, but debt service, you'll notice, is at 0%, and that's not because you don't have any debt service, but it's because the number is so low that it's actually less than 1%. So it rounds to 0%.
Jennifer, that's a reflection of bonding, bond carrying costs, servicing the bond debt?
Yes.
So as a percentage of the overall budget, it's not even 1%?
Right. That's your, that's your annual debt service that you're paying every year.
Which is a reflection of how we've paid for capital items in the past, however many decades, that we've not had to borrow money in order to do that, because our debt service is less than 1% of the overall budget.
Yes.
Just want to point that out.
So, the next graph that we have is debt per capita on bonded debt. This is also a measure that different towns use. It's supposed to basically reflect how much each individual taxpayer basically pays towards your bonded debt. This is over the last five fiscal years. So you can see in 2024, the debt per capita amount is the lowest that it has been in the last five fiscal years. So this measurement is, you take your total outstanding bonded debt, and then you divide it by your population. The population is determined by the census amount. And then over to the right, I do have the debt per capita amounts for some, some of your neighbors. So you can see that, how the town compares to some of these other communities, and it's actually the lowest compared to all of these other communities.
Can I ask us a question about that? The communities that you selected, are those just what you had available to you? Or if we were to look beyond that, would we find a few within Cumberland County that are actually lower per capita than us, to your knowledge?
I don't know of anybody who would be lower than you. Yes, these, these are ones that are available to me, but there are also communities that are in, that are close to you. I don't know of any, but like I said, I don't know of anyone that would have a lower debt.
I was just curious if that was a, those were selected for a reason, or if there are any that we know of that have no debt at all?
I would say most municipalities carry some debt.
Follow-up question that maybe Jessica can answer. What is our debt for? What do we have debt for right now?
Yeah, so right now, our only debt is for the bond on the bridge, for the, for the head trail. I would have been, we, we would have been debt-free for one year if I had gotten just one more year before the bond started for the bridge. But, yeah, they overlap by one year, so it's, it's a $64,000 payment.
I'm sorry, we took that away from you.
Yeah, that's okay. I almost had that trophy. No, we're good.
Does that include schools, too? That's just our debt? That doesn't?
This is just our debt, does not include anything with the school.
But that, school does have debt out there.
Um, positively, they do.
On page nine, we have an overview of the town reserves. So this is the fiscal year 2024 balance compared to the 2023 balance, and then the change. So looking at some of the larger changes, the rescue reserve increased due to a transfer in to be used for rescue equipment. Public works reserve increased due to transfers in to be used for vehicle replacements. The comprehensive improvement reserve actually decreased by about $416,000, and that had to do with expenditures for the bridge work and the Arnold Road reconstruction. The municipal buildings reserve decreased, due to the planned spending on the comprehensive plan, I'm sorry, I have the wrong one. That's the boards and committees reserve that decreased by $98,000. And the capital reserves increased by about $183,000 due to revenues and investment income that exceeded the expenditures and transfers out. In total, the capital reserves decreased by about $166,000, which is about 1% of the total balances. So you can see, in 2023, the reserve balances for capital amounts was about 13.6 million, and then that did decrease to 13.4 million.
So on page five, this mentions at the bottom that we have a fund balance policy. Is that something that we can see, we can review?
Sure. Just going to give a little plug. It is actually part of the GFOA budget doc, which you can find on the website, but I will make sure council gets it in their email. Just want the public to know where it is as well.
Yeah, I received a few questions about that, and great to have that information. Thank you.
It's essentially an unexpected expense for the operating budget. The fund balance is there, fund balance policy, that we have an additional one and a half months of operating, if for whatever reason there was an interruption in revenue stream, that we have a reserve so that we can keep town functioning. That's the purpose of that? Yeah.
This is a question probably for Jessica. Just based on the pie charts we're looking at for page seven, and I know this has been a cause for conversation with a number of taxpayers, because they did just receive tax bills. When we see the education percentage of the revenue going up from 23 to 24, 57 to 59, I believe this year it's up to 63, is that right? It's another 4% jump for 2025?
For 2025, I honestly don't have that right in front of me to know, but I'll defer to you.
My, my question really is, just a reminder to the public, that, that the town does not control the school budget in any way, and we do not control how that results in the tax increases, but, but we are responsible for collecting the taxes.
That is correct.
And so everyone is paying that money to the town, although that may not be clearly understood, that that passes through to RSU 5. Can you just say, so I'm finally getting to my question, how often does that money transfer? Does that transfer on a regular basis?
Yeah, we're required to transfer it monthly by the 20th of the month per state statute.
So we do hold on to it for a while, but then it gets transferred?
It gets collected just as the municipal taxes do, so in two installments. And so there are times in the year where we're kind of floating that money, and then there are times where we have it, and then it's dispersed, so, but it's required to be distributed monthly to them based off of their annual appropriation. And yes, we have no control as a councilor, as a town, over their budget, that's handled by the school board and voted on by the residents during the election.
Thanks.
And you can see it on your tax bill, which part, what percentage and how much it is on, it's on your tax bill? Town, school? I find it interesting, we have the discussion tonight, but prior to a vote on the school budget, none of this information gets out, which I, I think sometimes people can't associate voting yes or whatever. I would love to see, maybe, and I think Council Smith had a great idea, some sort of information of the last three expenditures, if that could be sent out to our taxpayers prior to the vote as public information, I think that's very important, because people don't know that.
So, I just want to clarify, because we, I have been talking a lot to people who are upset about their increase in taxes and the tax burden, and I have not been using 57 and 59%, and there's a reason for that, as education of the tax burden. The tax burden and the gross expenditures are two very different things. This is the gross expenditure, so we have not net out the revenue. So the school is above 59%. If you use 59% in your conversation with residents, it won't be correct, and it will confuse them, because on their tax bill, they see a much higher number. There's a reason for that. We get their bill. We get their bill net of their revenue. Our expenditures, expenditures are gross and not net of revenue.
My whole point is maybe to educate the public prior to the vote. And so we are at least talking from the same communication platform on that.
I think what you're saying is in terms of what is the proposed school budget relative to what perhaps the town budget is, because the school budget does get mailed out to everyone, but it doesn't have the context of the town budget. As you have pointed out, we're on two different calendars. So we can't actually say what the town budget is because we want to pass it yet, but we will have a proposed one.
You can say this is what it was last year versus the year before.
Just like we have a robust budget process, so does the RSU. And it's all public meetings, it's all open process. They take a roadshow, I think, to each one of the three towns. So I encourage everyone to be engaged in that process as I encourage everyone to be engaged in our process. There's a lot of information, this is complex stuff. If you want to understand, show up, town staff will answer questions, will be transparent. But it's a lot to understand and it's hard to just look at a snapshot or your tax bill and get the full picture.
I also want to add that those meetings are recorded. I think the RSC records their meetings as well, do they, do we know? Okay, because I know I have some folks that I talk to who are unable to come to meetings in person because of their schedules, but they are recorded for that purpose. So just wanted to put that out there as well.
For what I have, does anyone have any other questions?
Just a last comment, Jennifer. I was at the MMA conference a couple of weeks ago and did I hear that our annual report won an award again this past year?
Yes, the annual report that the town clerk's office works on that is in the hallway on your way out the door, yes, received the highest supreme level for their efforts.
And of which our budgeting is something we can portion of.
It was a part of it, yeah.
Does our budget also win any awards, Jessica?
I do submit the annual budget to the Governmental Finance Officers Association. And for the last, I believe it's 12 years, we have received an award for our budget document.
Very good.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jennifer. Appreciate the transparency and the going right through it, answering questions. It's nice to know our auditor is right on top of it and it looks like your job's pretty easy with Jessica on the other side.
It is, actually.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay, our next other business item is a brief discussion of proposal to follow up on what we've been talking about since last spring when we made a budget decision to bring the Economic Development Director inside Town Hall. We've had numerous workshops and conversations with FEDC and their continuing value to the community and to the council and specifically to our staff person Brett for economic development planning. The network and connections that FEDC has established over its 20-year history is robust and certainly valuable. There was a conversation about the transition and a request from FEDC if there was any chance to get some funding from the town. Obviously, we made the decision back in the springtime to not continue funding FEDC and bring that position in-house. I think we've already seen plenty of really solid results and good fruit from that decision. I feel very comfortable about that decision and I hope you all do as well. Brett's doing a fabulous job. However, it's not a zero sum at the expense that we just kind of forget about FEDC and its value. So there was some consideration about using a small portion of a remaining TIF fund balance in the, I'm going to get it wrong if it's the Village Station TIF, to provide a one-time allocation to FEDC in this current fiscal year to give them some buoyancy to continue and to essentially transition to a different way of doing business and operating their functioning. We had a summary memo that was included in our packets for this evening's meeting, subsequent to a meeting earlier today I wasn't at, but more questions came up than answers could be given, but the manager is going to provide some context for that shortly. So this is a long way of introducing that we're going to have just a summary conversation here this evening, but this, among a couple of other few things, are one of the reasons why we're having a particular meeting on the 29th of October is to resolve sort of what we may or may not do with a small allocation out of the Village Station TIF for FEDC. And there's descriptions of what their plan is. We encourage them to come back with a plan. That was specifically the directive. Please tell us a plan of how you are going to pivot from having a staff funded by the town to running your own show. And they've got some plans for that, including a collaboration with the Chamber of Commerce for like-aligned activities. So there's a little bit of detail, I think, to iron out. We're certainly very acutely aware of avoiding duplication. We have a highly competent staff person in the economic development position now and we don't want to be stepping on toes. So that requires a little bit more ironing, but I'm going to let Sophie, I'm going to stop there and let Sophie just explain the context of what we can introduce this evening and hopefully have some more robust discussion on the 29th before we take an action item to vote on any funding.
So first, I just want to say that while FEDC President Mary Davis has done an incredible job with heavy lifting, this proposal is really about a collaboration between the chamber, the town, and FEDC, looking at all of the needs and who is in the best position to fully represent Freeport externally with existing businesses and in a regulatory framework. I think council chair and Mary and Toni representing the chamber have met a few times to talk about this. But when we sat down earlier today to really think about the presentation and how this is going to work, it became pretty evident that the success of this will be in the details and we really need to have people who are going to be doing the work to be thinking about this, not just as relationship and policy, but truly what the roles are and what the workflow would look like. So after about an hour going back and forth today, what we agreed was that we really didn't want to get down the path of a high-level policy decision when we hadn't gotten those details in order and we really felt like council would want to understand those details. Brett, Toni, I think Maria Nappi representing the chamber, Mary, and I will be meeting next week, which should give us each an opportunity to kind of map out where we think the strengths, weaknesses, the overlap might be, so that we can come back to you in two weeks with a solid plan for the next, for the remainder of this fiscal year. And then give you a sense of what it might look like moving forward, which I think you would want before we started thinking about how are we going to fund it? What is it and what does it look like? So I'm excited working, how can you not be, right? When you're working with volunteers that are so dedicated in moving things forward. I think we're going to come up with a really nice plan and collaboration, but we just need a little bit more time. Having said that, I did speak, probably stepped a little bit outside the manager realm and spoke a little bit for where I think council might be, which is if we came together with a really tight plan and it looked good and they came forward for that discussion on the 29th, that we might be, council might be in a position to be able to authorize the expenditure of the TIF money. And the reason for that is if we don't, they go another whole month and they really want to get plans in place because they feel like they've been stagnating and they haven't been moving forward. So I didn't make promises, I would never do that, but I did think we bring expenditures to you all the time and if we've done our job and really laid them out well, in a way that you can follow and get them to you prior to the meeting, most of the time we can amend on the floor or be able to move forward.
Thank you for taking the time to go through all of this and I see some folks from the FEDC on Zoom as well, so I think you're right. I think we'll get to a really great point and I just kind of want to echo something I heard from you of sort of the long-term plan of, it sounds like we're thinking about the immediate, get this ball rolling again, but what will this look like next year, year after, five years down the road? Thinking about that as well, I think, is important.
I look forward to the discussion. Is it going to have the context of our potential contribution within the whole of the cost of whatever plan comes out? Because I think that would be helpful in us assessing our return on investment. And I know in the memo it talked about setting up metrics so that we could actually drive to that. And I think that's really, really going to be helpful, but I just worry if it's us trying to evaluate in isolation our contribution, that might just get a little tricky.
I think you'll see those details ironed out. I think the manager is precisely focused on that, as is Brett. I just want to reiterate that we've publicly made, you know, a number of efforts to try and find a way to hold FEDC and its value to the community close and present, particularly in the light of the, you know, what some perceived as a jarring decision to realign our staff and move economic development within staff, town staff alignments. Again, I don't look back on that decision with anything except that we made the right move because I think we have the really good candidate, a really good incumbent, I'm sorry, in that position, who's already executing and delivering on that. So I feel really solid about that personally. And I'm trying to navigate how we can sustain the activity that we've been receiving from FEDC and the value that they've been adding, but also in light of the fact that we made that staff decision for budgetary purposes. So obviously, it doesn't make any sense for us to kind of go back on those budget decisions just to sort of keep something going. So using a small increment from the TIF to go through the transition period, I think, is the focus. And I think getting to what you were just talking about, Matt, about seeing how this allocation fits in their overall planning, there's a convergence between two organizations outside of the town that could very easily achieve some savings and some enhanced opportunities for us as well as a community. So I'm looking forward to it. Daryl?
I think it's important that we support FEDC. I guess my question would be on the TIF. When that TIF closes out, is there a TIF that's going to be around for, we'll talk about that the next meeting, I don't need to know now. Or maybe you have the answer now?
I do.
Oh, okay.
So when this TIF expires, we will, prior to the expiration of this TIF, given what we're doing with the dog bone and identifying ways that we want some transit-oriented development and also to support affordable housing in our downtown area, the current TIF can be renewed one last time for 20 years, but it does not have the ability to use all of the money on general economic development. We're very limited in what we can use on items other than directly supporting transit-oriented development and affordable housing. So Brett and I are digging into what that exactly means. We're one of the first in the state that would be doing that. I think Falmouth has had some interest in doing that as well and will probably go before we do, or try it, not go, try it before we do.
All right, so more to come. You'll have details before the meeting on the 29th of, that are a result of the conversation and hopefully an outline of what we're expected to consider on the 29th as well as the larger picture. All right, our last item on other business is follow-up discussion on unexpended and remainder of the ARPA award from our original allocation from a couple of years ago. We have a staff memo here. Joanna, you want to set this up?
Sure. So as discussed sort of on and off over the last couple of months, town manager Sophie and I met on Friday and discussed the status of our ARPA award. As you can see in our table here on the first page, out of our $940,000 award, we have about $58,000 that we have an award awarded and then about $50,000 that is on the table that was never applied to anything. So that brings us to a balance of $107,095. So a little bit more than we anticipated, which I think is a good thing, that's fun. On page two, you'll see sort of where we've sent those dollars, how much they've spent and how much is remaining. And of that remaining category, Sophie, can you confirm that's what we think we'll not spend, correct?
Yes.
Yes, so the projected remaining is not, we don't anticipate that being spent down. So those are dollars that we can take back and reallocate.
So those are inside the 107?
Yes, correct, yep. So when Sophie and I met to discuss this, we did our best to sort of pull together everything we've heard from counselors and from the community about how this money could be used. We thought through a few questions of, you know, is this a first-time request or have we already given ARPA money to this project? Would the town normally do this? As in, is this a unique opportunity that ARPA can fund? Do we have a backup plan if this isn't funded by ARPA? Is there value beyond the dollar amount? And has this been identified as a priority from council in the town in the past? So we tried our best to be as objective as possible without thinking through any sort of scoring matrix, just sort of talking through those questions and highlighted what we think might be some of those priority projects based on what we've received from the community, which you'll see outlined in the remaining pages of the memo. So I think the next step is for council to review these potential projects, think through those questions that we proposed for decision-making, and then to come to our next council meeting and decide and get those monies into contract.
So this is what happens when the manager decides that it's a good idea to meet with counselors on Friday when staff is supposed to not be working. And then there's a long weekend.
It was on Zoom, okay.
Yeah, it was, it was. I managed to miss $10,000 that my assistant manager aptly, no, of expenditure that we would put as a high priority related to trail maintenance and that is the Town Freeport Conservation Trust effort to inventory and...
I thought we determined that wasn't ARPA funds because we, we did discuss that. And you told me it wasn't ARPA funds.
I did, I did, and I was wrong.
That's okay.
So that was another seven?
I believe it's seven, last I talked to Carrie, it was seven.
So which way is it going? We have less money or we have more money?
We have $7,000 less to play with here. So around $100,000 and, yeah, and change.
I guess it goes without saying, the clock is ticking here. We have just maybe 60 days left to get this expended or else we lose access to it.
In contract. In contract. I think that's the deal. As long as we have our plan and it's in contract by the end of this year, we're, we'll be in good shape. I know we would all absolutely hate to see any dollars or pennies go back. So.
So Counselor Pilch sent me a question asking about what was the level of encumbrance required to meet the ARPA threshold? And Jessica and I put our heads together. And what we believe is that adding money into a specific reserve or a specific, like special dedicated account probably does not meet the spirit of the law. If that is something that people really, really wanted, we have some other expenditures that we probably have maybe already undertaken and budgeted for that we could swap out for ARPA and reallocate budgeted funds.
I'll provide some context for the question, which is ever since we started talking about ARPA, my feeling is that we can spend it $10,000 at a time and do a lot of little things. And Joanna, you brought up the point is, are these things that we would do anyway? And I viewed ARPA as a unique opportunity to do something we might not otherwise do and write bigger checks for stuff that we might not otherwise get off the ground. So things that I've been thinking about, and I don't know how feasible they are because we just started discussing them, are is there, can we cede a revolving fund for something in the spirit of economic development or Main Street or downtown to say, here's a fund that the town has that we can repeatedly loan money out from? Can we cede a fund for land acquisition for conservation or other reasons, housing, something like that? I'm not thinking of 22 Main, but other, other opportunities as they may arise. Or can we have a fund available for some of the downtown vision ideas that we know are going to be very expensive? So when we talk about infrastructure, we talk about all the things we wanted to do with Mallard Drive, but we, for a variety of reasons, didn't do or haven't done yet. Or off-road trails, all these things are expensive. So can we put it towards something like that? So those, those are my ideas. I'm not saying that we shouldn't do any of the things on, on this list. But I wonder if there, there's a big idea. And the reason I asked about the fund is we, we're not going to have that contract ready by the end of the year. So if we dedicate it by the end of the year, but contract it next year.
I would love to explore that idea as well. And also, at the same time, for the MCC trail maintenance, that one, I would advocate for also funding. There, there was a budget request during budget season for that to be added to their budget, but it somehow got lost in translation, as that does happen.
Ended up adding it in. We ended up adding it in before you adopted the budget.
So the 9,000 ARPA funds are added in for?
No.
When you?
Oh, so we funded it with general fund, not with ARPA. Okay, great. That might take care of that request then. So we could remove that $9,000 request. I can...
So I would, I would strongly advocate for keeping trail maintenance money here. And I know we can get it under contract by the end of the year.
Let me rephrase. That's amazing. However, I want, I think that would be nothing but welcomed by our Conservation Commission. So if we could do that too, so they receive their original requests, and then also if we could give them more, I think that would be wonderful.
On the town branding and design, yes, 100%. We, we did allocate $25,000 in each of the past two years for what we called wayfinding signs. But acknowledging that it's not about printing signs, it's about designing and figuring things out first.
So one of the thoughts, I mean, it's nice to know that it was figuring things out first because I didn't know that. It's, it's, it's marked as signs. So I took, took it at face value. But if we had all of that, then we probably could get a lot of the signs in the ground. If that now means we don't need to do this and we can go back to allocating, that's fine too.
Yeah. We, we struggled to get it off the ground, honestly. We, we had the money available. We needed to get an RFP out the door and say, who's, who's available to do this design work for us?
I'm not going to be popular with my next comment, but we have seven highly engaged, really community-focused people sitting up here with an opportunity on a wish list of how to allocate a final $100,000 of federal pass-through funds. We could likely spend an hour and a half going through that and still not have a decision. So I might ask, in the spirit of just trying to get this done, while we have, you know, seven and a half weeks here left to, to get it obligated, if we really focus on particular items that we can very comfortably rely on the manager saying, yes, we can get that expended and in the ground by December 31st, so that we can, so that we can move this along. And, and I might think, I, I agree entirely with what Dan was saying, that this is essentially one-time money. So really try and focus on things that we might not otherwise generally fund or budget for. And there's a number of things that I think we could consider budgeting for in the future, particular capital items related to, you know, roads and infrastructure. And we have this whole dog bone thing coming. So there could very well be some opportunities there. But there are other things. So I'm, I'm just pointing that out. I'm not trying to stifle conversation, but just to maybe move along and, and maybe even entertain a motion or two.
I would also like to see that it's something that we can grow on, you know, something that, you know, if you find, if you have found money and you can put into something that will grow financially or whatever, it's better than to just throw it away. Or put it in something that doesn't, you know, it's a one-time
Yeah.
So I would love to know if we could use it for some sort of seed fund or something we could think as an investment. I don't know if we have that answer tonight, though.
And I'm, I'm not saying like a financial investment. I'm saying, you know, like the fire truck, that's going to bring value to the town. Those kinds of things that...
Darrell? I'm not sure if you could do it, but we had a report earlier, 200 people come, they're looking for tax assistance. I don't know. This is applicable, boy, I would think. What, if you look at the Ten of Opera, was there to help the people through in a crisis? What better program than that? And, and we struggled here when we did the budget appropriations. And we said, boy, it would be nice if we had more opportunity to put into that particular item, but we decreased it. So, you know, being an advocate of, of looking for something that would really help some people there.
I will point out that, sorry, Sophie, I just totally interrupted you. No, I was just going to say, I'm not, I am not at all ignoring you. I am trying to find the statute that deals with that because I think we are capped.
How much we can do? Yeah, that's in the back of my head, too.
But I think that cap is double what we're doing right now. But I can...
We're doing 75. We allocated?
750.
750.
And I will say, you know, Sophie and I went through and starred sort of, again, as objectively as possible. You know, there's always some subjective point of view in these processes. But we did go through and star what we thought would be sort of the best balance of priorities that the town has identified in the past. So that could be part of the conversation of making a swift, quick decision if we wanted to think through that process, as John mentioned. And I believe there are four that we starred, which was the Fire Department Fitness Room Rehabilitation, because that's going to be a future requirement for regulatory compliance. The Trail Maintenance, as we discussed, is chronically under-resourced and chronically cited, or always cited as a key value of town. The Tool Lending Shed, and what is the last one? The Town Branding and Design Process, since that aligns with our downtown vision and related work.
So we're going to look at this and go back at a later date. Within the next couple of weeks, I guess.
Is this something, John, you said you were entertaining motions. Or is this on the docket for the 29th? Okay, so you're not looking to do anything tonight?
Yeah, not, not, I mean, I guess when I was saying entertain a motion would be to narrow it down. So we have something to chew on and take action on on the 29th. Because we could probably talk about it for two, three hours on the 29th as well. To start such conversation, I might add that I would be strongly in favor of maybe an allocation across three particular items. Everywhere we turn with complete streets and planning and other outdoor-related stuff, trail and trail connectivity comes up. It's a high value that we've heard from numerous constituent groups. I think we should be supporting our trail improvements and particularly try and get some accessibility into some of the easier ones, such as Florida Lake, with some planning funds. I'm not going to suggest dollar amounts, but three things to focus on would be trail, as a suggestion, would be for trail improvements and trail infrastructure, including accessibility design. The second one that I, as much as I would love to put the whole $100,000 towards the fire truck, I think that's actually confusing if we're going to put out a bond for the fire truck and then we allocate a dollar amount to lessen the bond. It's going to be, well, is it 1.4, 1.5? And I, I wish we'd have maybe taken that one a little bit sooner because I, I would be firmly in favor of reducing the bond amount with, with the one-time dollars there. However, my three categories would be, the Electrify program has proven wildly successful. And I think if we continue to monitor that, I think, I think we can continue to support activities that are directly aligned with our Climate Action Plan and really encouraging people to reduce their own personal consumption of fossil fuels as an alternative. I, I don't think that should be anything more than a quarter or so of, of what is remaining. And then the third category, I think that we should really focus on is actually not on this list. And I would say that that is related to Public Works and/or Public Safety components to make, to make those departments run easier. That we're, we're stretching those work teams constantly. And I think we should be supporting them a little bit more.
What kind of ideas? Just general high-ranking, like what does that look like?
I will say that's part of the, the thought process behind the equipment, the workout equipment for, it's a wellness component, but would certainly be happy to hear more on that as well.
I, I guess I'm, I wouldn't necessarily presume to know what the highest priority might be. But something that would be tangible to, for the staff to be able to enjoy and recognize that the, there was a one-time allocation of funding and here's what we have available. But I'm just, you know, I'm just mindful of how much we, we expect of those two, not to take anything away from the other departments. But Public Works and Public Safety are literally out in the community, way past their normal work hours, doing extraordinary things. So that's a suggestion point. Again, we'll take this up for final action on the 29th. That's just my individual, not as your chair, but as a member of the council.
I suppose the, the question is here is, I hear and I definitely feel the concern that we could talk about this forever because we all have a lot of passion behind this subject. So what can we do to set ourselves up for success for the next meeting? I don't have an answer, but yeah.
I'm wondering maybe if we get an agreement. I think I really like the idea of the fitness for the Fire Department, Police Department, and, and I don't know if that could be accessed by the Public Works, too. You know, we do have a issue of some people that need to get fit. That's, that's exciting to me because we can pay that amount of money out very quickly and work is gone, blown out back issue. We paid out a number of them over the years. So maybe if we can move that forward tonight, and that would get us closer to some of the other ones. But I think that is a true payback that will benefit for quite a while.
We could do, everyone ranks their favorites, the ones they care the most about, and go that direction. And I honestly feel like per this conversation, there is likely to be overlap in that easily.
Joanna, is to send our favorites to Sophie and she can compile them and report back?
What are your thoughts, Sophie?
I think it's really hard for council who wants to probably fund all of this and more to make decisions. And I think guidance is always a good thing. But if you ask, if, if we ask for that, I would ask for it to come in very quickly because I might do some more work around that. So for example, if John, one of John's favorites was the Electrify program, we would have to say, for example, if we wanted to fund that at the $40,000, that's not one that you could fund for Electrify. You would say, we want to pay for construction at blah, 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 that's under contract or will be complete by the end of the year with ARPA money. And then the next item down, say, we'd like to reallocate X number of dollars that were not used for this program because Electrify, everything sits in a pot of money and is not actually, it's appropriated, but it's not under contract, which is where they really kind of put the wrinkle.
Could we, if, I'm not suggesting we do it, but just as a hypothetical, I, I didn't remember, Freeport Canyon is a nonprofit in itself, but could we give them the money under contract to say, you guys administer them?
We should. We, I mean, not we should, we should.
We can. We, we could give it to a nonprofit and say, these are the conditions we'd like you to distribute them.
And I feel like that we considered that, we talked about that when we made this list of, these were items that could be, we didn't even go down the road. If this couldn't be actually contracted per our requirements, we wouldn't have put it on this list.
So I really think you can get there with legal, ethical ways, just a little creativity.
Would the property tax program be in a similar place where we'd allocate the money, but it would just sit there until whenever there was a process that comes forward with applicants and the money's put out?
So the beautiful thing about that is if you did the property tax, I just looked online, it is the volunteer program where you take money off people's property tax if they volunteer and they're over an age.
That's the one that has a cap.
That's got the cap. The way I read the statute, I can check with Main Municipal just to double-check. There is no cap. So if that is a place you wanted to go, I mean, I would assume we would do it for this year. You would just, you're going to approve a list. You just make the list, you say what you want, and the first dollars in would be the ARPA funds. Even though they got expended later, they would technically be under contract with all those people.
I thought we weren't allowed to use ARPA money to reduce taxes.
Oh, is that, it's a rebate. We're not reducing taxes. We're not reducing. We're not reducing taxes. It's a rebate.
Maybe a sketchy gray area.
I, if you wanted to defer to MMA for a ruling, then I would go with what it says. My comfort level would, would not be that. But that's not, it's not my final decision to make.
So how about, we'll ask. You're going to be there tomorrow. You can even say, my, my crazy town manager asked me to ask you.
Hey, I'd like to get back to the maintenance of, of trails. We have heard this loud and clear every budget year. I don't think $9,000 is, is a lot. I would really like to see us really give them a charge because they are used a lot. And, and we've heard it many times that there are people that have, you know, ability needs that need to get it, so they can use the trails too. So what a great, boy. Yeah, I, I think we could really bump that up and, and, and a lot of people will get use out of that.
So would you feel comfortable when you talk about this one? Would you be, feel comfortable? Would you be, feel comfortable if we want to under contract with Freeport Conservation Trust for that work? So essentially, they're doing some for us now, they, they could hold contracts to get work done and we could pay it that way?
And that's been supervised through Public Works, if I remember right, they worked with Earl and stuff.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
They plugged in with Complete Streets and their efforts to connect the north and south end of towns, too?
Yes, they have been talking about that, and they're also very connected in with our Conservation Commission.
Because I know the, the design of getting over gullies and other geographic hurdles is one of the big delays in funding that trail improvement is the engineering to build those structures. And there's a place right there where we could engage funds to hire an engineer to do the design.
Yeah.
I don't think we're very far away from that at all, last time I heard.
We have a nice suspension bridge across one of the, Robling Cable Company.
So what are we looking at, 25,000 for that? Do we get off the mark here?
I think even more.
Yeah.
I'm with you, I'm with you on that, John. What are we thinking?
Great, I love this.
50, 75?
100,000.
I think 50, I think is reasonably, yeah, I, I could go with that.
Can I ask a question about that? Just because one of the things on the, on the list is the wood bank, which I know did not ask for a specific amount, but could we tie this together somehow? And is it possible for us to request that if they are clearing trees that could become firewood, that that gets directed to the wood bank?
That's great.
So that, and perhaps Public Works is a part of transporting that or something like that?
So, just so you're aware, legally, if we own the land proper under it, we could absolutely do that. If we, if it's in the right-of-way or if there's an easement, we have to ask the homeowner, the landowner, underlying landowner first, and if they were fine with that, then we could, of course, take care of that.
I'm thinking, you know, we're not there yet, so it's not top of mind, but how many times do we have storms where there's, you know, debris put out that folks would love to get carted away? Is there a connection we could get there to that refuse being taken to?
I think that's a more complicated question. But I, I think just in terms of when we're talking about trail maintenance, we know with, with storm blowdowns, a lot of that is just going in and clearing, but, but a lot of trail maintenance in general is also removing trees, branches, some of them sizable that could easily become firewood.
Great idea.
On that note, can you connect with Neil at Windsor Park? Because they've got a lot of tree work that he's trying to get ahead of. I don't know how much of it is usable, but at the same time, putting that in the back of his head, he can help triage, and I'm sure there's a significant amount that can be used. Can I, can, can we talk a little bit about the trail maintenance? So I'm all for creating, I'm all for supporting that, but at the same time, I'm mindful of something, you know, Dan was talking about, is that we want these dollars to have some longevity with them, and a, in a small trail maintenance project in five years, where's it going to get us, right? I, I think I'd be more in favor of using it for trail design and support for, like, the complete streets, like the, the Route 1 corridor. Like, get us further along on that project rather than go out and do some clearing that is absolutely beneficial, but the next two storms, we're going to be right back, and it's like, where did we spend that 10 grand? So, and maybe that wasn't the intention, but I'm just trying to sort through that in my own head.
Yeah, I'll say, I mean, I don't know how often you went to Florida Lake, but they had a lot of challenges with that bridge over the Beaver Dam that constantly gets flooded, and I know ARPA funds directly supported making that bridge long-term and sustainable in a way that wouldn't have happened otherwise. And so I think, I agree with the, the blowdown that happens every year, but I think there are some infrastructure pieces that are a part of it as well that these funds do support.
So, we are making the final connection through Concord Gully with the beans, which will require some bridges to be built. I, so I, I think the idea of putting it under contract for design and assistance makes a lot of sense. The one thing I would say, it's not just location design, there is an art to building a trail and infrastructure on a trail. And I think we have just amazing volunteers, but I also think some general design standards to help people understand in certain situations what the infrastructure should or could look like would go a long way.
Could, I was going to follow up with a proposal, which I'll sort of offer verbally here to see if there's any appetite for it, but can we, I'll throw out $100,000 under contract to Freeport Conservation Trust or a similar organization to hold in a trust that requires our approval to be spent, we can work on the wording, on long-term outdoor recreational assets. So included in that could be acquisition, design, infrastructure, so building a bridge or a new trail might be great, but maintaining an old trail probably not, or going towards buying land for a new trail, something along those. We can work on the words, but something like that. We give them the money, we'll have either a whole lot of guidelines, or one of the guidelines being, you need to just come back to us for the okay to spend it.
So I can tell you preliminarily, my understanding is that by the end of this year, these funds have to be contract, under contract. They don't have to necessarily be expended. You have until 2026 to physically expend. So I think pieces of what you're talking about can definitely be accomplished. I do want to pipe up, take a step back and talk about the rebate side of things because in thinking about what I have to report to ARPA and how those funds are used, I know that in the, the past two years of reporting, when it's done to residents and citizens, there's a lot of documentation and paperwork requirements that have to get filed with our expenditure that shows that, you know, income levels are met and that there was COVID impacts to this, and, and I don't know how much of that is still relevant to the expenditure of ARPA funds, but I know the initial rollout was that there had to be a COVID impact that, you know, that's why we did the, the premium pay as one of the first payouts, right? And I had to report every employee that got a payout of that premium pay and, and what it was used for, and that there was, that there was a true COVID impact. So I don't know if those requirements, and maybe Sophie has an idea on it, I don't know if those requirements still exist, but I know when there was residential assistance, that there had, there was specific requirements on the income and demographics of who the money was going to, so. So residential assistance required people who were low income, and I think you would find most of this qualifies that way. But I also think you're making direct payments in the Electrify Everything program. Yeah, with, yes, and with the, so, yes, with the verification of the, the electricity main rebate, moderate level of income verification of that. So, yes, you're right, there are ways to do it, and I'm not trying to suggest with the rebates that they're not, I just, I don't know if there's some of those requirements. And I don't know that that's where the appetite of council is at this moment, but I think there are ways to maneuver this. I do think that if you were separately to work with the Conservation Trust, and I'm not even sure they do it, but to establish a fund that could be used in collaboration with the town council to improve public trails, blah, 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 and then, so you do that, and then the next step is to donate money to the Conservation Trust to go into that account. It's not, it's not the same as hold our money for us. It's.
I'll focus back, though. I, I thought we had, almost had an agreement on the fitness equipment. So I don't know if I could make a motion tonight and get that off the table, or how that works.
Let's see if yours and mine are almost the same, Carol.
I know, I think they are. I know, but I, to me, that is a, a true benefit back.
Well, it's an investment in our town staff.
In our town staff, our people, our wellness program, and it's a no-brainer.
Right, so for discussion purposes, in two weeks, what is yours layout as? And then I'll, I'm going to read mine, because I, I fine-tuned mine.
I, the fitness, I think, is, is a no-brainer. I really would like to look at how to do some of the trail maintenance, and I don't know whether it's maintenance or for design. I think Matt has a good idea, or something along that line, you know, is where I would be. I would, maybe those two items.
Can I ask a question related to the fitness equipment? I think it's a great idea. We have a fitness-for-duty standard. I think we want to support our folks, but at the same time, I would like to see a fitness program built into the daily cadence before we expend a bunch of money to outfit a really nice space that it just collects dust. And I, I don't think that that's going to happen, but I would like to see that be a proactive push by leadership to say, this is important, and these are the reasons why it's important, and the town's made an investment into our health and fitness for duty.
Yep, I, I agree with that. Mine was going to look for discussion purposes, 45,000 for trail design, and I think using Freeport Conservation Trust works, $28,000 for public safety, fitness, and $27,000 to Electrify Freeport to continue that program, and maybe we do the same thing where we make a specific contract arrangement with EFAN to do that.
Can I ask a question on the tool lending shed and the Electrify program? Is there, is there overlap there? And is, is the, the shed is to equip the program to lend things, not a physical shed, correct?
Yes.
Is there a way for us to leverage both of those? Because I think they, they, they sit, they, they meet the same aim. I think that a lending program would benefit a lot of people town-wide and could be wider-reaching than just the Electrify program that is going to do a great service, but it's going to be limited in the people that, that value, get value from it. I, I think some sort of lending library of things that are useful, that people might need once a year, twice a year, whatever, it, it helps everybody and keeps a burden down of having to go out and procure it yourself. I'd be open to some sort of combination of those two.
Didn't we, didn't we approve that already? Without the big equipment, like, we approved the leaf blowers and the other stuff, and it's just the snow blowers we didn't? No?
No, we haven't. It was brought to us as a potential use for ARPA money, but we have not done anything with that.
I, I just, here's my concerns. We talked about, this is the lending program. If it goes to Public Works, we've got to get staff down there, we're going to be repairing the equipment. What's our liability? If I borrow a chainsaw and go cut my leg off, and if the chain comes off, we get the coverage. So I, at this point, would not support that. I'm with the other two, but, but hey, majority rule.
I will say that I think there's plenty of best practices, there's models out there of towns that have done this and have sorted out that liability issue, and I know when we were talking on Friday, you said that you anticipated via conversations with Earl, that he was actually kind of excited about it, but that there would be a pretty seamless operational integration, that there wouldn't be a whole lot of startup needs for that.
So, well, as described by Mason, when Mason and Bob and Kathleen were in my office, they're using that software, we should be able to set up when people can come in and make sure that we have staffing, want them to sign off on a waiver, which I think can be part of the software package, and we would want somebody who is handing them the equipment, especially big equipment, not so much a leaf blower, but, but other, to, well, actually, maybe the leaf blower, to talk about storage of the equipment and basic safety. We'd just make a one-pager as, so I think that's possible to do. You know, municipal folks are kind of interesting, and we do this job because we like helping people, and we like that direct contact with residents that isn't them shouting at us, we like that. And so, yeah, I think people were kind of, it, it could be relatively seamless. Will there be costs? Absolutely. Is it one more thing to add? Absolutely. But I think it is not like we would be forcing something to happen in an environment where it's not relatively set up for that. I think it would have been difficult at the library, given the way they're structured, but we already loaned out other pieces of equipment to the community, like barricades and cones and things like that. So we're kind of set up for that.
My only concern with that particular program is who pays when the equipment's gone, or, you know, it's end of its useful life. Is the town buying another piece of equipment? Or is it somebody else that's donating it? Because now it's an ongoing thing that we have, and if it gets broken, who's paying for that? Is it the customer that can't afford one that's going to be paying for now? Or is it going to be like what we typically do is, you know, it's okay, it's been used enough, we'll end up buying it again? So, so that becomes, so that, that's a problem. And I agree with you on the Freeport Can, there's not enough bang for the buck, is what I think you said. You know, it's a good program, but there is, it goes to one person or one family, which helps some out tremendously, but.
No chainsaw.
But, so.
And I will say that the tool lending shed does exactly what we're talking about is there's a return on investment on that because that piece of equipment will be used so many times that it will be an investment into a long-term impact.
And to answer your question, because they're good questions, but to answer your question about, are we now on the hook for when that snow blower dies, buying another one? I think the town council, as good stewards in setting things up, needs to decide that at the beginning, or put a relief valve in it where we're checking out at some point. Is it, here, this is a great opportunity, and when it's gone, we're, will be done unless people donate to it? Or is it staff, this is seeding it, and we expect as part of your annual budget for you to look at the equipment and make a plan to have it replaced over time? You know, of that $16,000, almost $5,000 is set up as the shed, because it really does include a shed, because we didn't want it, we didn't want to store them in the garage proper.
So, so I was going to, the, the two programs that I think we really should work on are the fitness program and the trails. Those are, and the trails have been one I've been trying to get done for a while.
Good consensus on those, so that might get us almost there, like, maybe to 75. Anyway, so again, I'm not trying to cut off conversation, but we could keep going around and around in circles here. So I think we have a good sense, we have three or four really good ideas, maybe the manager could come back with an outline of those three or four with suggested dollar amounts, and then we can just vote on that as an item.
So, and I would need to.
After a little bit of discussion.
Definitely have a conversation with Kerry.
Yeah.
Have the trust.
And to your point about the fire truck, it allows us to borrow up to 1.5. So if we put more money here, we don't have to buy, we don't have to borrow 1.5.
Yeah, yeah, I, I, I know. I really wish we weren't, because I, we haven't done that in my entire time in the council to go bond for a big piece of equipment like that.
Can I ask a quick question about something that we talked about briefly and then we pivoted away from? And I just want to, as with some of these things, it's where, where could the money come from if it wasn't ARPA? Can you just say very briefly, Sophie, if, if the branding and signage piece? the branding and signage piece, is there, is that something that you've identified it as a need? Is that something we would be then looking for funding for elsewhere? And is that possibly a Destination Freeport TIF use?
So I think potentially it could be some of the Destination Freeport TIF within the, the general district. And then Jessica and I might be able to make some arguments. We'd have to pull out the TIF documents to see. The reason I highlighted that as a priority was, number one, it, so many things are falling on top of that. Like, we want to do, we, we want better branding of the town and in our communications. Well, it's really hard to do that when you don't really know who you are and what our brand is. And we want signs and we want to convey a feel of our community, which then lends to all sorts of other things. But what is the feel of our community and, and how do we kind of lay that basis down that I think other things, especially in the downtown design, really rely on? And as I'm working with DOT on the Mallett Drive multi-use, multi-use path and the design for that, which then will be in line for grant funding for the construction, there are elements that we could put in that that could help convey, you've arrived in Freeport, but I don't know what that's supposed to look like. So it would be super helpful to kind of, it's feeling like a logjam. And if what I'm hearing is council is perfectly fine with using the 50,000 that we currently have budgeted and being ready to allocate more for signs, once we understand what a sign is going to cost, understanding signs will probably be 10 or 15 different types of signs, then I'm, I don't feel, I mean, I feel like we're in a good place with that. But I do think if I had to rank all of these, for me, in terms of getting the projects done that council tells me they want done, that would be a linchpin in being able to move things forward.
I just wondered, since, since we are talking about Destination Freeport TIF next week or next meeting as well, perhaps this is something that could be a part of that if, if it's applicable.
Jessica, do you have time to look at the TIF document?
Station TIF.
I think destination, I thought it was all one TIF. It's destination, Destination Freeport, right?
It's two.
The Destination Freeport TIF?
Yeah.
It's also called the Village Station TIF?
No.
Two different ones.
Two different TIFs.
We're going to look at the TIFs.
Pretty sure.
And we'll be able to talk to you about that. So how about I do one of my infamous Friday afternoon memos? I'll work with Councilor Benoit again and Jessica, and I'll work on what she says I can spend, which she hates when I say that because it's not her rules. She's just making sure we follow them.
Appreciate everyone's contributions to the conversation tonight.
Shall we adjourn? Second.
Okay, moved and seconded to adjourn. All in favor? We are adjourned. 8:55.